Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Nation Shalom. We're pleased to make our building available today. You may recall, a few years ago, when there was a mayoral race, we opened our doors and we allowed candidates for him to come in at that time. It was a time well spent. The Nation Shalom has been a part of the West Orange community since, actually, the 1930s. We're over ninety years here, and in that time, we had only three rabbis. I am the third rabbi over that entire period of time I've been here. This is my fourteenth Rosh Hashanah and Yom Ha'atzmaar since I first moved here. And it's been my privilege to be a volunteer, like so many of you, in the township and to support the civic discourse of the township to the best that I can, really often just as a person, not as the rabbi of the Nation Shalom, but just as a guy who's near and who's kids went to the public school and so forth. So I'm just thrilled to have us here. I do apologize for the security that we need to have in this synagogue. I recognize that, you know, a few weeks from now, when people go and they have a forum at the Presbyterian Church, no one's thinking about armed guards and lists and checks and keeping little old ladies out who just want to be part of the process. You know, the truth is, on Rosh Hashanah, we had antisemitic leaflets. In the last couple of years, we've had swastika because we've had bomb threats. Those of you who aren't living in my community and are in West Orange really don't understand properly what's going on. And it's all real, and it's not all from far away. So we have to do these things, and we have to be credible so that we can do these things with each other. And that's just unfortunately the price we pay. So thank you, and for those who were barred at the door, please convey our apologies and our hopes that they'll be able to attend the next forum in a couple of weeks. And the details of that forum are posted down the door of the synagogue as people come in. But I'm just the rabbi here, and it's really not my show. Roz and Larry, you guys are in charge. So if you'd like to say hi and tell them how it's gonna go, that'd be great. And thank you, everybody, so much. And for those of you who follow my calendar, a leshonot of a sweet new year to each and everyone. Thank you, Rabbi Tzvah.
Thank you, everybody. They're always coming back to our synagogue to us, time and time again. Thank you for coming, thank you for signing up. Debbie, I want to introduce Deputy Mayor Larry Ryan, who is part of this endeavor. If you or somebody you know is not registered to vote, you have until the fifteenth to do so. As a matter of fact, I just read that Livingston is extending their registration to go to their town hall until 9:00 PM on the fifteenth. So without further ado, welcome to West Orange Town Council 2024. We have the format for tonight. It'll be five minutes of intro for each candidate, and then questions from the audience. We've got a minute, minute and a half for each answer, and then a two-minute wrap-up. So here we go. First up, who are you?
I am Roz Mosswood. Sorry. I'd love everybody to hear it.
Michelle Casameno, Councilwoman Michelle Casameno. Oh, and I wanted to thank Councilwoman Susan Sarkow for getting our seniors here today. So thank you.
Thank you, Roz, thank you, Eli, and thank you, Larry, for putting this together today. And thank all of you for attending. This is very important. We have a clock, I'm not sure how formal this one will be. I always hate a clock, it tends to ramble. But I'm always proud to start off stating that I am a life home resident and a product of our West Orange school system. I know my husband in our high school. We stayed in town to raise our beautiful family, our three children, and now we have our two beautiful granddaughters, so very excited about that. Professionally, I have over thirty-five years of mortgage banking and marketing experience. I'm a regional business director for Management Commercial Real Estate Services down in Lakewood, New Jersey.
It's hard to hear you, Ms. Casameno.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Down in Lakewood, New Jersey. We also have offices overseas in Israel. So I'm very attuned to the happenings and the crisis. And it's been very heartbreaking, and it's been a tough year. In 2015, I started my public service as a councilwoman here in the township. Prior to that, I served for ten years on the West Orange Board of Education, taking my courses, becoming a certified school board member. I'm very honored to have been elected by this community five times, three on the school board and two as a councilwoman, and very, very proud of that. I've worked hard through the years, a volunteer for many organizations, and they're very proud of my record. So if you don't have my calling card, or I haven't stopped by your home yet, or you haven't taken one at the door, please do so. They're outside, and we can pass them around. But I have a long list of my record, which I'm proud of. I have a website as well. A lot to talk about, can't talk about everything in five minutes, but I will highlight when I first came to the Township Council in 2015. I jumped into senior services. There are kind of void there. I kind of always go where there is a void. And I worked with our health department to secure a grant for Partnership Health. I want to thank Roz, always had given us that information for Partnership Health. And we are now AARP certified, ARP certified. We're the third to community in the state to have that recognition. And we're able to continue grant programs and expand programming for our community. And we have a great department that's done a lot of work for us. As I moved on in time, I worked with our downtown alliance, worked with a lot of economic development projects. Also, you know, getting grants and support for our small businesses. When COVID hit, our businesses were struggling. I worked long with many members in our community to get businesses up and running, get our schools back on track. But after twenty years of experience as an elected official, I feel that my number-one priority to this community has always been providing public safety. Public safety is paramount. I feel that has been one of my important roles. Always supporting our first responders, our police, our firefighters, making sure that you are safe. And we see that as evident today, as we had a sign in to come here, as we walk down our streets in our community. Public safety is first and foremost, and I take that role very seriously. Our pedestrian safety, always working with our township engineer and mayor and administration to make sure that, you know, pedestrian safety, that we can cross our streets and our walkways, to make sure that we have been paving our roadways and updating our infrastructure. Also, number two on the list is maintaining the level of services which you inspect. You know, our tax base provides many services. We saw that with our garbage contract this year. The JIB program that runs through this side of town, I was instrumental in providing that back in 2018. And basic quality-of-life issues, our environment, COVID to government, stormwater management, pop-up parties, consumption of alcohol and cannabis in our public spaces, we had addressed this year. You know, since, again, since COVID, since October 7th, our world has changed. We need strong leadership that's able to change with it. I feel strongly that I try to provide that. I don't want to say it outright, but I'm always willing to continue to work to do so. And I hope you could support me in the form of your three votes. I look forward to your questions this evening. And if I can't answer anything here tonight, I will make myself available afterwards, or tomorrow, or the next day, because it's important that we stay transparent. We're gonna talk about debt obligations, financial situations, and there's a lot to unpack. Again, thank you, and I look forward to this evening. I have a preference. Whatever your pleasure is, I will follow suit. Good afternoon. My name is Tammy Williams, and I'd like to say hello and happy Washington to all of those who are here and celebrate today. I am your first black elected councilwoman in the township of West Orange, and it has been my pleasure and privilege to serve each and every one of you. I am originally from North Carolina. I'm a Southern guy. And so I came here to West Orange, New Jersey, after attending the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill, or at Chapel Hill. And in 2002, I moved to West Orange, and I raised my family here. I have two children. They graduated from West Orange High School in 2015 and 2021. My youngest daughter is a senior at Boston Conservatory in Berkeley. I'm so happy to be a mother of a graduating senior in college, because what does that mean for me? I will no longer have to pay tuition. So with that, and as I have continued to matriculate in West Orange, I have served as your Human Relations Chairwoman, appointed by your former mayor, Robert Parisi, in 2016. I served in that capacity for four years. If you aren't familiar with the Human Relations Commission, that is your commission that serves for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And when I served in that capacity, I had the unfortunate privilege, but pleasure, depending on how you look at past and present, of hosting at our town hall, the largest reception after the Pittsburgh massacre. We brought together, not only our Jewish community, but all clergy. And why did we do that? Because this was a time that West Orange was hurting, and we needed to heal. And so I brought together all of our community to celebrate worship and heal from a most devastating attack on the Jewish community. And since then, I have now become your councilwoman. And as your councilwoman, I take pleasure in sharing with you, if you do not know, that because I care about our community, I took time this summer to visit Israel. Why was that important? Because a large percentage of our community is Jewish. And when our community is hurting, your elected officials should seek to heal. And that is what I sought to do. Not only have I visited Israel, and not only have I sought to be attentive to all residents of our community, but during my tenure, I take specific pride in starting a suicide prevention and awareness coalition. I did that with stakeholders in our community. I did that because West Orange had a high prevalence of suicides and suicide attempts. And so what did I do? I brought together the people that are important and care and are concerned to identify what we could do differently. And from that, in 2021, West Orange was the first community in the state of New Jersey to host a ride-along program with mental health professionals on any mental health crisis call. What is that, West Orange? That is a policy shift. What does that mean? That means that I have been at the front and center of making sure needs in our community are not only met, but met with policy changes. And why do I seek to continue to serve in our West Orange community? It's because we still have so much to do. Our job, my job, is not done. And together, we will continue moving West Orange forward. What's important? Quality of life issues are extremely important in West Orange. I live right down the street. So when someone says to me, "I don't feel safe in West Orange," that's important. That means something to me. And what I will do is continue to stand with every West Orange resident and make sure all of us feel safe, feel protected, and are heard. What does that mean? How does that look? For the next four years, I am asking for your vote. I am asking for your continued support. And what will I do? I will do what I've done for the past four years, which is listen to you, which is participate with you, and I will continue to share how I will do those once I have an opportunity to be before you again. Thank you.
Joker Kabak. I'm a writer, not a speaker. Pretty good speaker for a writer, but that's not very good. I am a numbers nerd. I'd like to think that I'm a lovable numbers nerd, but I'm not really. So here goes. West Orange has a lot going for it. That's why you and I moved here. But we face challenges: finances, environment, development, transparency, the bio-antisemitism that has appeared in our town, and that all people of goodwill should vigorously oppose. These challenges are why I served for ten years on Town Council and now ask you to return me to help make this an even better place to live. My priorities: fiscal responsibility, quality of life, and by the way, the City Art Club recently endorsed me; smart economic development, transparency, and accountability. My speeches have lots of numbers. That's not to undervalue my other priorities, but a recognition that our municipal finances, just like our household finances, largely determine how well we can serve our families and community. Unfortunately, our town's finances are a disaster. The other candidates aren't talking much about this, especially the three incumbents running for reelection, because it's their doing. Since I left the council in 2020, in the first three budgets, spending soared $23 million, up 25% to $113 million. It's down this year, but still up about 18% overall. We've exceeded the state's 2% cap on property tax increases three times. Debt has skyrocketed 49%, up $56 million to nearly $170 million in only three years. For comparison, that's about 85% more than Livingston, 143% more than Montclair, and 106% more than South Orange. Borrowing at historically high interest rates, nearly 12% of this year's budget, $11.6 million, pays debt service on our municipal credit card. We're not buying anything with this money, only paying for past spending and borrowing. All this hurts property values. The town's package space declined by nearly $100 million just in the last three years, and in ten of the last 12 years, by $250 million. That means we're all pitting a bigger slice of taxes to make up for the shrinking tax-based pie. Your taxes are buying less, which undercuts your investment, and your property's market value rises less than it could. To fix this, we must eliminate unnecessary spending, prioritize residents, and keep the town as affordable as possible. We need to increase competition for town contracts and assets. No more no-bids. We need to consider selling some town assets to pay off debt. We need to end revenue-robbing 30-year property tax payments and payments in lieu of taxes, known as PILOTS. We need to minimize tax increases. We need to speed up and improve the budget process. We need to generate new revenue. We need to identify and attract the right kind of commercial businesses to build ratables. This is also the best way to help our schools, which get two-thirds of property taxes, by increasing property market value and assessments, and thus revenue to them, without raising taxes. Begin charging for the valuable JIB service, which is free to riders, at an annual taxpayer subsidy of more than $600,000. We need to improve parking enforcement and meter corrections. We have a big challenge protecting our environment and shrinking tree camping. As the recent problem at the Manor Side shows, we need a better job of protecting trees before they get cut down. We need to get the word out to anyone who buys or leases property in town or provides tree cutting services here, what the community rules are. Thank you. And we need to do a better job of protecting healthy trees when we repave roads and sidewalks. Trees have many benefits, important to reduce erosion and worse. We need to acquire the Mount Pleasant Forest to protect the crested apartments just below to ensure we avoid a repeat of the catastrophic landslide at Marandale Apartments in Northfield Avenue. I voted for numerous open space acquisitions on the council, and this is as important as any other. We need to determine the source of widespread contamination and dumping at Cressmon Forest. In my first stint, I was the only independent and lost important votes. Now we have two independent councilmembers who are losing to incumbents by a slight margin. I was recently on the new deal for the downtown redevelopment Phase Two movie studio. This, too, is a financial disaster. Redevelopment transparency problems show challenges remain. In redevelopment, the mayor, council incumbents won't say where the public works and animal shelter are going, and who's paying for the move. They refuse to make public the environment, which, thank you very much. I actually dropped the numbers during the afternoon.
Abby gets her round of applause.
Have her work, the council needs it.
I think we definitely have a nominee for MVP of the debate. Good afternoon, everyone. This is kind of a new experience for me. I haven't run for office before. I've never participated in a big, well, in seventh grade, I've participated in it.
What's your name?
My name is Jonathan Redline. First, I want to thank the Pleasant Hill community for organizing us and for hosting us today. And of course, the Nation Shalom, thank you very much for allowing us to use yours beautifully. Thank you to the other candidates, of course, for participating. And thanks to everybody who's come. You know, two hours on a Sunday afternoon. I think there's probably some sporting event on television, or some darkly illegal things to be done, so I appreciate you all coming. Like I said, my name's Jonathan Redline. I've lived in West Orange for one of the 20 years. My wife, Elizabeth, is here, and I met as P.S.C. volunteers in the mid-'90s. We were English teachers in Cameroon and West Africa. And we taught English in other schools in parts of province of that country, if you're familiar with the geography. There are lots of stories there. I'm happy to talk to anybody about them later. We came back from P.S.C. and after a couple of years, we decided to go to graduate school. We both applied to, got into Emory University. I think it's the only place I got into. So we moved to Atlanta together. I was in law school, and she earned a PhD in English. Now she's a lecturer at C. Col. University. So in August 2001, I started my new career in New York City at the Securities and Exchange Commission. We were in the World Trade Center, and that was a pretty interesting first two weeks that I started in August. And there's stories there, which I'm happy to talk about there. We had our first child, whose name is Nathaniel. He's almost 21. We were living in Brooklyn, and we decided that we no longer wanted to live on a fourth-floor walk-up with a dog and a kid and all of the complications that go with that. So we started looking for a house on the Roundup on Overlook Avenue here in West Orange. What we found there was pretty incredible. A street full of kids, full of young families that were pretty, a lot like us, a lot of people who were commuted to the city. And we felt so lucky to have landed where we did. So we moved here when Nathaniel was, I think, five months old, or five months old. And then we quickly had two other kids. We have a second kid, Cal, who's now a first-year at the Yale University in Montreal. Nathaniel's a junior at Warren Wilson College, which is in North Carolina. So we had to evacuate him after the hurricane a couple of weeks ago. There's stories there, and I'm happy to talk about those later. And then we have Morgan and Milo, who are twins, and they're juniors at high school. All of our kids have gone all the way through West Orange schools. We've had incredible experience there. We've had, you know, our kids have very diverse needs, and we've had support for them all the way through. We've been very pleased, just very happy with friends they've made and teachers they've had, and all of that in our community here in West Orange. Professionally, I'm an attorney. Like I said, I started at the SEC. I did investigations into financial fraud, into insider trading. I brought one of the first Foreign Corrupt Practices Act cases of its era, which involved foreign bribery of some foreign officials in Iran. Fraud in corporate financial reporting. I'm used to sort of digging into facts and figures and understanding timelines and stories to really get to the bottom of an issue that's presented. After the SEC, I worked for a large law firm and then for several different companies. I finished my career in 2021, doing an early retirement. I was at the New York Stock Exchange, working in the legal department. So I have a lot of observations. I've been working in and around municipal government for seven or eight years as a volunteer and as a sort of interested resident. And I have a lot of observations about it that I'll share with you hopefully as we dig into some of the issues that we're gonna talk about tonight. I hope that everyone who is seeing this later on the video or who's here will ask themselves, what do you want from a council member? Do you want someone who's proactive and digs into the issues, who identifies problems and solutions, and then pursues them and executes on that, on those goals? And I just feel like we have such a huge opportunity in this municipal election to really change the way our municipal government works for all of us. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I'm one of those people who kind of benefits from a little scoop that you get. Okay.
Joyce Sweden, do you want to give one?
No, no, it's okay. Good afternoon. I'm Joyce Rudin, and it is my honor to be here to offer myself as a candidate for Town Council. This afternoon, you're hearing from other candidates on our ideas, our backgrounds, and hopefully, the good back-and-forth on competing visions for the future of West Orange. Let me share a little bit about myself. I grew up in West Orange. I graduated from Mountain High School, which is now West Orange High School. I later got my Master's in Journalism from Northwestern University. I am a mother of three, and I am married to the inspirational Rabbi Rudin of Adaf Shalom. For years, I was an AYA reporter, producer for NPR, PBS, and Consumer Reports TV. Many of you volunteer in the PTA, in your church, or in other organizations. I look at everything through the lens of a reporter. That led me to co-found our Green West Orange. We've exposed wasteful spending and fought to protect our environment from poor decision-making and flooding in our neighborhoods and arose our quality of life. Why am I running? I'm running because our quality of life is on the ballot. Today, I will explain the problem, and I will give you the vision. It's all about pay-to-play. If you're a homeowner, you know that our property taxes have gone up 30% in the past nine years. Why are they going up? Because the incumbents, Michelle Casalino and Tammy Williams, who are here seeking your vote for a fourth and second term, have given 30-year tax breaks to the same developers who fund their campaigns. And it is we, the residents, who have to make up for the shortfall in revenue with higher taxes on our homes. Both of the incumbents have taken incumbents from the township attorney, whom a majority of the council has voted to fire. Our township attorney has lost case after case that cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. He is incentivized to bring lawsuits to make more money for himself and his law firm. Only the two incumbents who took money from him have voted to help him keep his job. Back to pay-to-play. This is incumbent Tammy Williams' 39-page campaign report. She raised $50,000, $50,000 for a local campaign. And guess what? 75% of the payments are from outsiders, developers, lawyers, and cannabis dealers hoping to get contracts in town. Campaign contributions also explain why our downtown library was sold off to a single bidder, the Albert Group, without an appraisal. Joe Albert, the developer, has penned in Doug Adams' campaign coffers with $1,000 contribution. I described some of the problems. Here are some of the solutions. Elect me, and I will stop the practice of pay-to-play contracts and bring transparency to our budget and contract process. Unlike some of the people on the ballot, I will not take, and I have not taken, money from any business doing work within the township. I will end the bad practice of giving tax breaks to wealthy developers, and I will work, as I have for the past decade, to protect our environment. We are a town of mountains and valleys, and what happens uptown can flood the residents downtown. Elect me, and decisions will be made on what's best for West Orange, not for campaign contributors. I'm excited about developing- I'm excited about developing West Orange in a way that enriches local businesses and makes us a destination spot, not a drive-through. We need to think of ways to make West Orange fun so we don't have to keep spending our money in Montclair, South Orange, Maplewood, and not in West Orange. We can do better. I am, as Shirley Chisholm said, unboyed and unbossed. I will, as I have done for a long time, advocate for you, the residents of West Orange. Thank you so much.
I'm Doug Adams. Thank you for having me here. Thank you to the other candidates and the residents of West Orange. My family and I moved here 28 years ago. And I can go through, you know, all the things. I'm originally from Michigan. My parents were divorced before I even knew that I existed. So I spent most of my life between Ann Arbor and Detroit. If you know anything about the area, it has a very colorful history. They're two dramatically different places. Detroit's a very intense place and Ann Arbor is a very diverse liberal and culturally and academically profound place, right? Many of your family members, some of you may even gone to the University of Michigan, go Blue, and that being said. But I guess the thing that is important, and I guess you should know a little bit about me, I wasn't a good student. I was an athlete. I wrestled, I had scholarship opportunities. And back then, we had to do grants because my family was not wealthy. My mom, when I went to fill out the paperwork for the grants and things for the first time, I saw her tax return and she made $6,000 in that year. Now, I don't know everybody here, but even in my meager mind and thinking, I still don't know how she did that. But Joan Adams was an amazing woman and she raised four kids. So that was kind of our journey. I decided, my older brother was in college. He was a basketball player at Ferris State University. He was, he was the athlete in the faculty when he graduated. He actually got a free agent invite to Dallas Cowboys camp, which I still don't understand why he changed, why he didn't take it. I wouldn't be here now. I would probably be living under his skirt, you know? So I decided that I was not going to be another poor college student on my, on my mom's ticket. And I joined the Navy. I spent seven years surfing my country. And if you understand enlistment, that wasn't one enlistment. I took two oaths. I met my beautiful wife there. We started our family out in California. And after that, I spent years in corporate America. I spent 38 years between the public sector and the private sector. Motorola, Fairleigh Dickinson University. My career was IT, was a systems engineer. The thing that changed my career, though, was the fact that I began to work with a small group of gangbangers in Chicago, inviting them to my home. And all of a sudden fixing computers and my career goals began to shift. To my wife, Shabrin, she had to sell her large four-bedroom home in the suburbs of Hoffman Estates. And we began the journey to ministry, which led us here. When we moved here, my son and my special needs daughter went to school here. They graduated and now my son has moved his family here. I have grandchildren at the high school. What it ultimately boils down to, I have a card, a card out there that'll tell you that I was on the chair of the Human Relations Commission. And it'll tell you that I served on the Juvenile Justice Commission. It'll tell you that I served with the Civilian Review Board, at least what we were starting. And I've had wonderful relationships with many people in town. But I want to get to the nitty-gritty. Any town, any community, thank you, I can do that. Any community that is growing or thriving needs two things. A thriving residents, thriving families, and it needs a thriving marketplace. Unfortunately, the reason I'm doing this after 28 years is our leadership dialogue has digressed to the place of banter and special interest group conversations. And the business of the town is not getting done. And as you can see, and unfortunately, we are a town that has dramatic diversity, not just in our ethnicity and our faith, but also in our economic structure. And the challenge is, how do we do this? And how do we have conversations that allows us to care for all of our residents? The ones down the hill and the ones up the hill? There's a conversation about the studio. And you're right, somebody else may come along. But some families can wait for somebody else to come along. Some families need something to happen now. And so I just would encourage you to consider the ideal of someone who just wants to make sure that we're not looking for demons everywhere we go and we're not looking for villains under every rock, but that we're coming together to decide what's best for West Orange.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking. We appreciate it very much. First, before we continue again, I want to thank Rabbi Tobin and also Beneshal for hosting today. You're really great. And also, I want to also thank Abby Klein for as being our time checker. Also, just a quick thank you to the mayor for being here today because we also know it's her birthday. So happy birthday to the mayor. Thanks for serving the world with us. So next step, I want to generate really is question and answers. So what I'm going to do is ask each one of the candidates to have one and a half minutes. Abby's going to be working very hard, one and a half minutes to give answers to each question. How it's going to work is feel free to walk up to the mic. If you feel comfortable walking up to the mic, we also have a mic that we can actually hand to you as well. So we'll start with that. However, you want to raise your hand or come up to the mic.
I'm going to start. First question is going to start with Joyce and everybody answers. Next question is going to start with Joe, let's be fair, right? Next one is going to start with Jonathan, who's come around. So that's the order we're going to take.
Okay, anybody first?
I'm ready.
Okay.
Hello. All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Frank Rosso. I'm one of the forgotten voters in town. I'm a senior citizen. Six candidates have not mentioned anything about senior services, quality of life for us. I live at the Denning House on Main Street. The traffic situation is horrendous out there. Been in touch with some police officials. Satisfactory answers. I'm hoping you, as the council people, will think about the senior citizens. I haven't heard anything. As I look out in the crowd, I see a few of my fellow voters here. If you want our vote, we need your help. It's banned in town procedures, okay? So I hope somebody can, I got one real quick one. I don't know how this is being solved. I live at the Denning House, which is right next to the West Orange Oaks, which is a voting hall. But you have over 200 seniors who have to go down to Edison Junior High. Some of us can't get there. Townwide transportation, some of us forget. That's another difficulty I would like to look into, but I guess that's county. But thank you for, you know, telling us about yourselves. Appreciate it. But you better do something about the senior welfare in town. It's horrible. Thank you. I'd like to, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. I think that is an excellent question. And I think that in addressing what is going on with our property taxes and how high our property taxes are and how outrageous our budget is, somewhat addresses some of the concerns with the senior citizens. Because if we were spending our money better, then we would have more money for senior citizens. Seniors have the right to age in place. We have an obligation at the town council level to control our spending and to control taxes. I am the only candidate who has offered a solution to paint brightly colored crosswalks across all of the crossing areas in West Orange. Why hasn't this been done? It's not glamorous, but it saves lives. I also think that if there's a problem with the polling issue at, at the Denning House, then it should be moved. We need to make it easier for seniors to age in place and there's a lot more programming. One of the things that I'm upset about actually is that we now have a very large room at the new senior housing building. And that should be used for senior activities. The, the, there should be an ancillary library, as was promised, in that building. And the Toby Katz, Toby Katz Center should be used fully for programming for senior citizens.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosso, that is a very good question. And I have to go back to my time on the council to recall that I was the one who, along with Rosary Burrell and a few other people, drafted an ordinance to create the Senior Citizens Advisory Board at a time when West Orange was the only municipality in the county that did not have that kind of board. When I offered it to the council, nobody else would second my motion to consider and have a full debate. So that had to wait until Councilwoman Scarborough was elected to the council and she took my draft of the ordinance, modified it, and got it passed. It goes back to the point that there are now two independents on the council so we can have somebody who offers an ordinance and somebody to second it so that it can be fully considered. And I suggest that you two guys get together and talk the cause. I've been working with Ms. Morelli on a podcast to talk about all of the programs that have been created under both the Older Adults Advisory Board and the Town's Senior Services. There are a lot of services. You don't look like somebody who might want to do the rumba, but there are all kinds of programs going on all over town to serve the older adults.
Problem is, we don't know nothing about them. There's no information put out.
You have to get my newsletter.
I got yours, Cusman, so that's the only one so far.
Frank, thank you very much for that question. Thank you for that follow-up also. What I have seen in my experience working, you know, as volunteer in several parts of our municipal government is generally a lack of planning. And I think that this is partly a planning issue. I think it's critical that seniors have transportation available so they can get around. If there's a voting issue and an access to voting issue, you need people who are on the council burden and champion that cause with the county and fix the situation so that you can have easy access to voting. Crosswalks are critical. I know we've been talking about that at recent, at recent council meetings. And these are, these are issues that when, when people bring them up, we need people who are in leadership, leadership capacity that will listen to them, understand that they are real, and then create plans and goals to meet them. It's a, it's a planning issue. And that's a, that's an issue that I see across our municipal government. And I think I may wind up setting up a broken record before this session is over, but I can see it in so many different ways. And I think that senior services and making sure seniors understand what's available and how to access those services is a planning issue. And I think we're not doing a very good job of that.
Thank you. So in response to senior services specifically, I've always been committed to serving our community. And that's why I want to focus on solutions that help us all. So whether it be senior services, economic development, smart budgeting, or prioritizing health and wellness, I am committed to making sure we take care of all these issues. As your current and serving elected officials, I share with you that a lot of times government solutions don't happen overnight. Just like our councilman indicated, there was something that he suggested many years ago. But what's important about making sure any legislative initiative gets passed is the cooperation of your council colleagues. And so, yes, we've had a very difficult time over the last few years getting measures passed. But what we are looking for in this election is to make sure we elect residents of this community who are focused on solutions. We don't need people to identify and talk about what couldn't be done, what hasn't been done. We need to talk about how we're going to get the job done. And that's what I'm here for. That's why I meet with different groups. That's why I'm available. If you look at my history, my record, where I show up, I'm everywhere. Check my website and you'll see that I'm always available and will continue to be.
Thank you. Frank, I'm sorry you're here when I made my statement. One of the first things I accomplished when I got to the township council in 2015 is we did a townwide senior citizen survey. We surveyed the community. We found that we were in need of affordable housing for seniors and transportation. Which that led to another grant that we received from Corners for Health and we were able to hire and expand our staff to a senior livabilities coordinator who works with Laura Van Dyke and Noelia Perez. So when I got to the council in 2015, we had one individual in charge of the department. And now that department has expanded to, to full-time and a part-time person. We expanded senior citizen transportation with a GIP service, which we make available to all. And Ms. Van Dyke, she has a newsletter. For those who can, do not move with a computer or utilize a computer, you can get all the information mapped home to you. In regards to the issues in our neighborhood with the heat go up, we've had trouble with the timing of the light. Ms. Lepore is supposed to take care of a few issues. He had tried to work with the county. He has retired. And Ms. Corbella, our new engineer, she's been doing outstanding job. And she's also providing a survey, or not a survey, efficiency report to get all these issues taken care of.
You know, somebody said one time, it doesn't matter how much you know until people know how much you care. It's one thing, we talk about what didn't happen on the council, why things didn't happen on the council. The question becomes, are we electing people who know how to work with other leaders to get done what we need to get done? You see, when it ultimately boils down to it, there's five people there. And for somebody to say that this person is independent or that person is independent, if you look at the meetings over the last couple of years, you will see that independence is not a word that somebody would use to describe it. So when it comes to the seniors, and I, my wife and I are even there or very close to being there, I think that there's a couple of things. One, there's program zero, where they're looking at all of the towns and pedestrian, all the intersections and pedestrian safety. So there's going to be some things that come out of that. And we do need seniors' voices in that conversation. But the other piece of it is that we have to understand that there are seniors who are in our senior housing, but there are seniors that are living in their homes by themselves. And how do we support them? And how do we look at that? And that's why we need a townwide view. And I think one of the challenges that we have is we banter or we do what I call cultural appropriation of property sharing. I don't know why any council person would say that the Toby Katz Community Center should just be for seniors when individuals with developmental disabilities have been using that center for over 30 years for their programming as well.
Okay, thank you very much for my answers to the first question. So we're going to take one for the audience as we sit down. Do you support the IHRA definition of antisemitism resolution that was passed by the township council last January? We'll start with you.
Absolutely, absolutely. The township is, one of the reasons I moved my, with my family here is because it is so diverse. I wanted my children to grow up in a diverse community, diverse by... I wanted my children to grow up in a diverse community, diverse by all measure, not just the color of someone's skin, but where they're from, their age, their religion, everything that contributes to the content of their care, and that's what we have here in West Orange. And unfortunately, uh, we have had instances of either outright antisemitism or borderline antisemitism in a township that nourishes and promotes Judaism as one of the great religions of, in the history of the world, and we need to come together and say no to antisemitism and discrimination in general. That's what our constitution and our laws, our federal laws, uh, require. And absolutely, we should continue to confront antisemitism wherever it's at.
I do support the definition of antisemitism. I agree with it. I also think that, you know, as a person who is definitely not an expert on antisemitism and, um, and a person who is seeing a rise in antisemitism both locally and around the world, um, it's something that is deeply concerning. I also think that it is critical, especially for, you know, at a local level where we have more individual sort of interaction and more individual touch into communities, that there be educational efforts, because it's one thing to say, you know, this is a definition of antisemitism, and this is a, uh, something that our town is adopting or our state is adopting. And it's quite another thing to make people understand what antisemitism really is. And I think that there is a gap there, and I think that that's a gap that, that the municipality could help to address by facilitating, um, meetings of different groups in our town. Our town is sort of, um, split among several, you know, different geographical areas and several different cultural and historical backgrounds that people have, and I think that we need, um, to do a better job as a community in coming together and understanding how, why there's a rise in antisemitism, what that means to people who are most closely impacted, um, by this issue, and how we can address it as a community.
Thank you. As your current sitting elected official, in February of 2024, we passed that resolution defining antisemitism in West Orange. And so absolutely without question, antisemitism should be defined, and we should certainly not tolerate any acts of violence toward any community. What I do understand, however, is that when you feel unsafe in your community, whether it is antisemitism, whether it is crimes against people of color, George Floyd era, it is not acceptable. It is not acceptable. And so what do we do as a community? We have to actually do what we've already done, which is identify and define what antisemitism is. But antisemitism isn't just the only hate that we have in West Orange. I'm understanding that at the beginning of this holy week, there was antisemitic rhetoric that was tossed on this very long. To my home, as an elected official, as your elected official, I had antisemitic material mailed directly with my name on it to me. It's intimidating. It's threatening. It makes you feel unsafe. So how do we combat this collectively?
So I too, um, had to guess that resolution. I also assisted in correcting the resolution when Councilwoman Scarba, in person, presented it to us. In 1971, I was a young girl who lived right down the street on Pleasant Valley Way, was from Burger King, and woke up to a very loud noise, not knowing what went on. It sounded like the world exploded. It was a bomb that was set off here in the West Orange Jewish Center. I won't forget that, and it's something that, you know, that comes back when, um, when we discuss that resolution. As a school board member, I always felt it was very important. I supported the Holocaust curriculum that influenced the West Orange schools. I support Jay Wagner and his endeavors every year for Holocaust Remembrance Week. I go to that little school. He brings a speaker in to teach our students, and it's important that we teach our youth about a history of many that live in our community. These are tough times. I mentioned earlier about safety, and I've always, always supported that we have extra security here. Our houses are door shut under attack, and not, and not just here, just in our churches as well. So again, it's been tough times, yes, five, six years, um, here in our nation, and, um, we need to do what we need to do. We need to make everyone feel safe, and the easy part of that resolution was making many people feel safe.
I think, um, some things to me just seem obvious. Um, there's no other community of people in West Orange, and I'm sure in other communities, that are openly vulnerable and make themselves openly vulnerable and identify themselves on weekly basis. When your moms and dads, your children, grandparents, and your families are out walking on the street, everybody knows who you are, where you're going, what you're about. Nobody else is as exposed as the Jewish community is. So it just seemed to me, when the conversation came up, it was just the right thing to do to make a statement as a town about what it means to protect those who are our residents. I also think that it's a shame, there was a time historically when other people groups who had experienced oppression and abuse were aligned together. The last time I checked, the composer of Strange Fruit was a Jewish man, and somehow or another, we've lost sight of the fact that we all hate, in my, uh, context, we might call it sin, doesn't care who it hurts, but it hurts. And so I think that there comes a point when we have to stop allowing ourselves to be separated and come together, and when one portion of our community is hurting, everybody's hurting. Uh, I believe that all lives matters, but during that social justice window, it was the right thing to do to eliminate black lives.
I absolutely support the resolution, and I am very, very appreciative of Councilwoman Scarba for initiating it, for educating, um, our community, and for getting the support amongst the other council people, some of which I've heard were not always on board with signing it. I understand what it's like to go to school on holidays and on Shabbat and have to be protected by armed guards. This is very real and hits home to me. Unfortunately, since this resolution has been passed, I have seen instances where it has not been enforced and upheld by the township. For instance, just a few days ago, there was a Free Palestine, um, demonstration downtown which did not comply with our township's regulations in terms of getting permits. They were supposed to get permits five days before. They got permits three days before. If this was a violation of permits, why was this allowed to take place? In another area of town, in a heavily Jewish area, there is a noose hanging from a house in front of it with hateful speech against Zionism. The, um, police chief has said that the hateful speech is permissible because it is, it is a First Amendment. You're allowed to say what you want, but a noose? That's another question. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Um, now, Amy has a question. Um, we're gonna try to keep it to, uh, one minute because this way, you know, we have a lot of questions to be answered, so, uh, I know it's hard to do one minute, but, uh, we'll, we'll give it a shot, okay?
I'll speak loud. Can you hear me back there? Great. Okay. Joyce, actually, perfect timing to bring this up. Put this one to all of you. Jonathan, it seems you have a lot of support from West Orange for Humanity, more aptly named West Orange for Hamas. And in fact, one of its members, rather, the wife of one of its leaders, is even your campaign treasurer. They formed after 10/7 to push lies about Israel and the Jewish people. They often pushed anti-American propaganda. As Joyce mentioned, uh, to keep it short, they held an environmentally unsound anti-Israel for Palestinian Bolo launch purposely timed for when the Jewish community was going with their respective synagogues from the holiest day of the Jewish calendar, Yom Kippur. The group has been responsible for the overwhelming majority of antisemitic hate that's spread in this town, and we already addressed the permit. So if you were on the council here for the few questions, one, what measures would you take to make sure that rules and ordinances are followed and resolutions respected? Have you yourself met with West Orange for Humanity? Will you disassociate yourself from them and publicly condemn them? And if not, why should anyone vote for you when you bring an antisemitic and anti-American agenda with you? Thank you.
Okay. I feel like, so that question is to me and only me. I think that people support me in my campaign for lots of different reasons.
Can't hear you.
I said, I think that people support me in my campaign for lots of reasons. I have talked to and met with people who, um, are associated with West Orange for Humanity to understand sort of what their concerns are. There's a lot of your, your questions, so I'm trying to make sure I hit all of them. The part about, your, the part of your question about enforcing regulations and, uh, resolutions, you know, I take it as being sort of directed at the protest that Joyce mentioned, I think, but I didn't know about that because I'm not involved with West Orange for Humanity. I didn't, I don't, I didn't know that that protest happened. I was all angry at that. Enforcement, you enforce resolutions, you enforce regulations and ordinances without regard to the person, okay? It's a law enforcement issue. If the permit wasn't correct, they shouldn't have protested. If they have a correct permit and there's something that the group wants to say that can be done safely, that isn't, um, you know, a violation of the law, it's difficult for the, for the police to say they can't do that. I think that as a community, we need to do a better job of talking to each other. I think that we need to do a better job, people who are involved with that organization have real pain, I know. And I'm not sure that they fully understand the pain that the Jewish community feels in town. I think it's important that they, that they come to a better understanding of that, but I think we've all, we've got to talk, this is a small town, all right? I've been involved with political campaigns with work that were extremely divisive, and I know that at the end of the election, we still have to live together, and I think we need to practice that, whatever. We're not doing it right now. And if anybody just wants to, you know, respond, because I know some, the way, like, if you respond to it, you don't have to, don't follow it.
No, no, thank you. I do want to respond because that's matter, and I want it to be very clear that a permit was not required for the galleron that was at O'Connor Park, and a permit was sought and by our legal department, our enforcement, our police department, they were told in our administration that for their small galleron, a permit was not required. We do not have any ordinances in West Orange at this time to prevent any type of balloon or helium release. Um, that is something that this administration may or may not consider, but what I do know is important is I sat down as your elected official with West Orange for Humanity, and that is my obligation as your elected official to sit down with everyone. However, what does that support look like and mean? Should any group have the opportunity to infringe upon the rights and/or intimidate any other group? Absolutely not. That is not acceptable. And what I do understand, because I am for roots, I am a member of West Orange for Humanity's Facebook group, and yes, some of the rhetoric is spicable. It is antisemitic, and so because of that, and because of who you elect as your elected officials, this is why elections matter, because each of us as your councilperson will appoint people to our commissions and our boards, and if we don't elect officials with the same principles that we hold near and dear to our hearts, then this is what we get, and it's not acceptable. Thank you.
So, um, you know, this week, what we all do when you're elected official, we, you know, touch base with the mayor and, uh, and our chief. And what was frustrating on the part, I know it is frustrating here, that, um, you know, they didn't need a permit, but at the same token, a permit a month or so ago, when, uh, when, um, the mayor and myself went to the high school to put the candlelit service where we, we marched down Pleasant Valley Way, um, our permit wasn't taken out for that, for that activity. And, um, so, you know, this is, Councilwoman mentioned our ordinances and, and goals. You know, there's free speech, and I know it's hard at times, but we all, you know, we all live in the United States of America, and it's very painful lately for, for our liberties. And so therefore, I know that it was very, very painful for many of you because of the holiday. At the same token, um, because of the holiday, I think that from what I've heard, I did not speak with them, wanted to make sure there wasn't a counter test. And thank goodness, um, it was a group that went to the park, was there for a short time, and from what we heard, was peaceful, and, uh, they kept folks, it fits up. You know, we, very diverse community. When I was a young girl, they were, you know, we, I was, Italians, they were sort of Jewish community, we had a free population. We're very diverse now, and it's, it's, it's been really a lot of challenging, and, but we're all gonna keep open dialogues, and we're gonna keep working through, and we're gonna keep everyone safe, because as I said earlier, the safety is all of that, your safety, and everyone's safety.
I'm gonna follow your instructions, okay? So this is my time up, I'll be down. So I think this, I spent seven years defending the Constitution of the United States of America. I actually hate the fact that there are hate groups like the Ku Klux Klan that can go out and they have the right to protest, but the reality is to restrict their right to protest might restrict some of the protests that helped, um, people who look like me get privileges that we would not have had otherwise. So I believe in the Constitution of the United States. Hamas is a terrorist group, so it just is what it is. They're not, it's not, they're not a political group, they're not a social activist group, they are a terrorist group. So anything that has to do with that, I don't think should be protected. A while ago, the Supreme Court, years ago, ruled that burning of crosses is no longer a constitutional, uh, expression of communication because of the hate that's associated with it. It would seem to me that hanging a noose would be the same way, considering how bad lynchings are a part of our history and other things like that. But I do think this, I think that if we're not having healthy, mature conversations, then we don't even expose those who have bad hearts. And I think that's a big piece. We need to begin to have healthy, mature conversations in our leadership so we can expose unhealthy hearts.
Let's be clear about one thing. The slogan Free Palestine means the destruction of the State of Israel. That's it. That is against the resolution that was passed by West Orange. So if you have a group that wants to protest in support of the Gazans who are suffering or Lebanese community that are... who are suffering, or Lebanese community that are suffering, or other victims of war, including Jewish victims of the Hamas attack, that's fine. But when you start out with a slogan, "Free Palestine", you are directly violating the resolution that this township council passed.
Well said, Ms. Rudin. And I would also add, "From the river to the sea" is also a totally objectionable saying because it presupposes the murder of all Jewish Israelis. And it must be stopped. I think we, we were in Israel last year, just before the horrible events there. And what we saw was amazing. There were people from all parts of the world, all ages, all ethnicities, all religions. And they were all operating and got along in Israel and in the economy. You, you have to see it to believe it. And the point I want to make is that antisemitism is not a given. It's the oldest hatred in the history of the world, but it doesn't have to be. And the way to fight it is to stand up against it. If only half of, if only a third of what I've heard about this group tonight, today, is true, I would totally dissociate myself from them. I wouldn't. This is not an issue of free speech. This is an issue of hatred and discrimination. And I was on that march too, down Pleasant Valley Way. Again, from what was described as the event at O'Connor Park. The march down Pleasant Valley Way was a totally civilized memorial. I'm sorry. A totally civilized memorial to the murdered and continuing hostages in Gaza. Not what was described at O'Connor Park. So we'll start with the first person that raised your hand.
First, I have a small suggestion. If you don't mind standing when you speak, we can see you better. Mr. Kirkofey, I referred to the film studios being a debacle or... And I was just wondering why you, why you feel that way? And if you have a candid screen.
Thank you so very much for that question. This is going to be the most transformative real estate project in the history of West Orange in the past thirty years. And to identify it as a debacle is, quite frankly, I can't even describe the work. I just said to you, transformative real estate project in West Orange. For thirty-plus years, at least twenty years, and I've lived here for over twenty years, those, that area has been a problem. It has been empty warehouses that have no use and/or utility, imply no income to our tax bases. It is an environmentally catastrophic. It has to have cleanup. And this time, for this film studio, which so many federal tax credits, state-backed tax credits are available to bring this industry that is going to create five to six hundred jobs in West Orange. And for you to say that it is a debacle means that you are not in touch and tune with what needs to happen in our township for us to continue moving forward. This is a property that is on the border of Orange and West Orange that will not only bring revitalization to our downtown corridor, but will also revitalize our entire community. The amount of jobs, the amount of industry, the new industry, the businesses downtown that will benefit from having an incomplete... Guys, one minute is too short. One minute is too short. But thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you all for talking quick. So the debacle is that the council did not approve for the entire area to be included in the redevelopment project. My colleagues voted, myself and Councilwoman Williams, we voted to support Matrix Development Group to buy, to purchase all of the properties in that quarter. My colleagues, we were outvoting. That is where the debacle occurred. We all of the, all the properties are back on the tax rolls and moving forward with the whole parcels being developed. This is a game changer for Main Street. I spent a lot of my time on Main Street, working with our small business owners. I see businesses come, I see businesses go. And what goes on on Main Street, lobby's out there on Main Street. It doesn't affect us in Pleasant Town, but it does. Because it is your tax dollars at work. It is revenues. So, you know, again, a minute, I have to talk to you afterwards to explain there's going to be figures thrown in about another minute or so that will contradict from what I'm saying. And that's what the debates are. We can't go back and forth with a lot of misrepresentations here tonight. But I'm more than glad to break down the project with you. The big debacle is Matrix Development Group wanted to buy all the properties. The properties that they didn't have the opportunity to buy was where the cleanup was. They got stuck with the, all the severe environmental issues on the properties that they bought. We're glad that they're going to move forward. We're going to get five million dollars in grants from the state of New Jersey to clean that up. We're going to split the costs afterwards. And I really look forward to Main Street development after twenty years. Thank you.
I think the challenge with the conversation about the studios is, well, this could be better, or this could be different, or somebody else may have come along. But the reality is, this didn't even start in town. Whoopi Goldberg came when all of this stuff started happening. And her brought the subject up and brought that to the town. When that fell through, this developer who's actually doing this work in Newark, and they're not doing it initiated, they were contacted by a studio, Lionsgate Studio picked them to do the development. And then they came to us to do the development. And the challenges were always in this conversation about, no, let's not do this because maybe something else could happen. Let's not do this because maybe somebody else will come along. Well, they've already paid four hundred thousand dollars of taxes that they didn't owe, that we gave up from the last two years that we owned the property. And they're willing to invest millions of dollars in doing it. Yes, somewhere in the future, there may be something flying around the air that could come. Well, my grandmother used to say this, and many of you have heard this before. When did the bird in the hand become less valuable than the tooth that's in the proverbial bush somewhere that we can't find?
Everybody wants the downtown to be vibrant and to be successful. But once again, let's be clear. This is just a promise of a plan. There is no plan. What happened the other week when this contract was extended was that they got eight, the developer got eighteen more months to figure it out. And while they're figuring it out, our council people are bantering about jobs like four hundred to six hundred jobs that will be coming. How the heck do they know that that's what's going to happen? Because somebody said that that's what it could be. Let's look at real numbers. Let's look at a real plan. And by the way, Ms. Williams received nearly a thousand dollars in campaign contributions from the developer and then voted for this development.
So these are the facts. These are provable from the documents themselves and from the council meeting. Don't let anybody tell you differently. This deal that Ms. Rudin just referred to shifts as much as five million dollars in remediation costs from the redeeveler to the township. It sells Fifty-Five Lakeside and Twenty-Five Lakeside, which is home of the Public Works and Animal Shelter facilities, for a multi-million dollar loss. Since we bought Fifty-Five Lakeside, we have lost more than six hundred thousand dollars in annual property taxes and county. And it makes a thirty-year property tax abatement and pilot increasingly likely, which will cost us more millions of dollars. And guess who pays for all of that? You guys do. The mayor and councilmember incumbents won't say where the Public Works and Animal Shelter are going to go, or who's paying for that move. They refuse to make public the environmental assessment report or specifics about how we're going to pay for remediation. They won't show us the property appraisals. This is a huge transparency problem as well as a financial problem.
Questions?
So Film Studio Downtown, will it be transformative? Will it revitalize downtown? I don't know. Those are the wrong questions. This is a question of trust. Okay? This is a question of, do you trust incumbents to have the ability to follow through? And the way I look at it is I look at history. Okay? I look at, I think about the prison development, how it took decades for Phase One to get done, how Phase Two never got done, how years passed, and then the town finally got the courage to default to the developer. Are we going to have follow-through? Are we going to have accountability? Are we going to have an administration and people on the council who are willing to dig in and understand the details and follow up and make sure that this contract or idea of a contract or whatever it is is actually implemented? I don't know. I'm thinking about the history. That's one of the main reasons why I'm running. Because I'm a person who digs into things, I'm proactive, I understand how to identify problems and address them as we go. And that's why I'm standing here.
Next question.
As you've already heard, according to official reports that have been filed with the state of New Jersey, Councilwoman Williams has received forty-nine thousand dollars in contributions, by far the most of any candidate, multiples of any candidate. Of that amount, only eleven thousand dollars was contributed by West Orange residents. The rest of the contributions, a total of thirty-eight thousand dollars, came from out of town, real estate developers, law firms, and consultants, like the developer Matrix for the movie studio, many of which do business with the township, whose contracts with the township that Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Casselino, as councilmembers, vote to approve. Are your votes influenced by these thirty-eight thousand dollars in political contributions? And to avoid a conflict of interest, we agree to return the contributions made by those companies and individuals whose contracts you have voted to approve.
Can I go first, because that's the way that it means? Like, what is the office committee should do?
Do you have people identifying themselves who are answering the questions?
That's kind of a later. Thank you. So yes, I have accepted almost fifty thousand dollars in campaign contributions from different persons. And unlike the people who have spoken about my contributions today, I have not dug in to figure out exactly who gave me what. But what I do know is whether it was one dollar or one thousand dollars or even more. We have in the state of New Jersey campaign contribution regulations. And I have not accepted a campaign contribution that exceeds those laws. And so therefore, your question to me directly and specifically was would any of those contributions influence any of the decisions that I would make as your next councilperson? Absolutely not. I'm a little bit more than a cheap pick. So I'm sorry. A thousand dollars, twenty-six hundred dollars, which is the campaign contribution limit for a single individual, is not something that is going to incite me to show favoritism. Just not that cheap. I'm sorry. I'm not. That's it.
I think because the question was directed at Ms. Williams, I think we just move on to the next question.
No, indirectly, I got a couple of cheap shots early in the evening. So have I received contributions in the past, minimal ones? This time around, I knew it would be a very tough race. And, you know, another new grandbaby, I can't deal with all the aggravation. So what wasn't mentioned was that I put out thirty-five hundred dollars of my own money for this race. I have not taken contributions from various sources. And that's not a knock on my colleagues because I just didn't want to deal with it because I knew where this race was going this time around. Cheap shots, it sets us off in back of our records and what we have done for the community. Again, Movie Studio, it's a great opportunity for our township. It's being misrepresented. I mentioned earlier, we have five million dollars in grants coming our way that we will be able to remediate those properties. So again, a minute is not nearly enough time, enough time to refute some of the misrepresentations this evening. Thank you.
You know, everybody talks about facts, as if everybody or anybody has the absolute full understanding of every conversation. So yeah, I'll just want to tell you, I would not be running if there were not people who were donating to my campaign because I don't have a community circle of folk who can write a thousand dollar check or a twenty-five hundred dollar check. I don't have, I got young families in my church. I spend most of my time with young families. So there is a difference between the communities that exist in West Orange, and that's actually why we have campaign regulations. Or campaigns would only be for the people who are personally wealthy enough or have friends that are wealthy enough so that they don't have to get contributions from other places. That's the first thing. The second thing is I take offense to people who would impugn my integrity as if somehow or another, somebody may be able to buy my opinion. So that means that your opinion can be bought, your opinion can be bought, or somebody else's opinion can be bought. And for people who ask questions, who have cost the town thousands of dollars because they have money to constantly sue the town every time they're not happy with something that the town does, please be careful how you comment about other people's economic situation.
I doubt protest is too much, I think, me think. That's the quote from Shakespeare, "Close enough". Folks, transparency is the mother's milk of politics. You make of it what you will. One part of this is what the law says, and the other part is what your heart says. If you think that this is improper influence to take this money, you vote accordingly. And if you don't, you also vote accordingly.
I just have to echo what Joe said. There are laws and there are appearances. And if it appears like it is inappropriate, then you should vote that way. When you take large contributions from people who have done development work or lawyers or seeking business in town, it does show you who you represent. And that is not representing the residents. And I am sorry if I impugned your reputation. That is certainly not my intention. But I think that who you take money from matters.
I think we're back to a trust issue. And I think that if you look at the campaign contributions in this cycle, and you look at the campaign contributions in prior cycles, you start to see a lot of names that appear over and over and over again. And then if you start to look at which developers are getting contracts in town, and which lawyers are getting hired by the town, and which lawyers are receiving referrals from all of those people, you start to see the same names over and over and over again. And nothing is going to change as long as those people continue to control... And nothing is going to change as long as those people continue to control political campaigns in our town. And that's another reason why I'm running. That's why right now I'm two-thirds self-funded. I wish I would have done what I think Joyce is doing, and limit spending to under $5,800. I wish I would have thought of that before, but the signs cost too much, so I missed it. It's a trust issue. And like Joe said, if you don't have an issue with it, vote accordingly. If you think there's been an issue in this town for a long time, and the same people are controlling everything, vote accordingly.
Next question.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Lysler, resident of West Orange, and thank you for all being here. My question is, schools back in session, they're about to get report cards. I would like each of you to give a grade to the current town council, and then followed up by one ordinance that you would bring to the table on any subject that your colleagues can vote for.
And if you would answer, we're going to get running out of time shortly, so let's keep going.
I think that part of the challenge that we have in town is what's going on here. See, the truth is, I don't have an axe to grind with any of the people up here. I think they're highly accomplished in the areas that they've been. But I think there's two things that are important about leadership. Leadership has to define reality, and leadership has to communicate a compelling vision. See, it would be wrong for me to assume, because you guys are concerned about antisemitism, that you don't care about black lives. And I could be impugning you if I said, why are you always talking about antisemitism? What about the rest of us? No. I'm not going to assume that you don't care about other people just because you care about what's going on among your people. I'm not going to assume because you're rich, you don't care about people being poor. But that's the banter that gets caught up here. And so I think there's two things. One, I do think that it's important for us to send a message to our young people about what it means for us to come together and value each other. And if I had one ordinance, it would be to establish a youth commission and an advocate for individuals with developmental disabilities.
For the council incumbents who are sitting here tonight, because I can't be judging the councilmembers who are not here tonight, I would frankly say a D or an F, because they have not represented the interests of the residents. They have represented the interests of the developers. I think that the first ordinance that I would suggest would be to make sure that all of our walkways, particularly in front of schools and senior centers, be brightly painted. It is a simple, cheap fix, and it saves lives.
I would have to bifurcate my report card on the council. The two independents, I would give an A or an A-. The three incumbents, who are all running for reelection, it would be a much lower one. And just to try to keep it short, you've heard all of the numbers and the facts about why I feel this way, both from the budget perspective and from the redevelopment, so I'm not going to repeat them again. But I will guarantee you, they are not misinformation, they are straight facts from state-required reports and from the legislation that they approved, despite me going to the council meetings and explaining to them why they shouldn't. If there was one ordinance I would pass, I would throw everything I could think of to provide maximum transparency for your government into an ordinance, so that it would be crystal clear and super easy for you to know anything you wanted to know about any legislation and any councilperson on the council.
So I like that idea. But it wasn't what I wrote down. So I'll say very well, I was a current council, I would say C-, D area. I think there's been a ton of distraction that has prevented our municipal government from really getting work done for our residents. And I think that's really unfortunate, especially this year. The ordinance that I would work on and want to enact first would be to require budget projections. And to require budget projections, you know, out three and five years, so that we know where we stand financially, really know, and then we can have a conversation about what we want to prioritize. Part of that would be requiring an impact statement, so that whenever new ordinances or resolutions are proposed, there is a budget impact statement, so that we understand how it's going to affect our town finances going forward. I think until you do those things, I don't see how you can make goals, or plan, or, you know, execute on a priority for our residents.
Thank you. So, the question started off, if I understand it correctly, was what would be given the grade of a current council? And so if we were going on a 4.0 scale, A through F, quite frankly, as your sitting council member, I'd give it an F. Why would I give it an F? Because we have not functioned as an efficient and effective council. There has been bickering between councilmembers. Our last council, or our last election in West Orange, three sitting councilmembers ran for the position of leader to be your CEO, chief executive office. And only one person won. But since that election, we've had sitting councilmembers who fight against each other, amongst each other, and instead of doing the business of West Orange, we've been doing the business of ourselves. And that's not acceptable. That's not acceptable, that can't continue, and that is why this election is the crossroads and critical time for West Orange. And for me, if I can have just one additional comment about what I would change, it would be something non-related to the township, to give our children and our schools one mental health day per quarter of each school year. Thank you.
So I've been elected official for 20 years, served on two entities here in the township, Board of Education and the Township Council. This last term has been the most stressful term that I've had. It started right out of the gate with COVID, with COVID in 2020, which the township was in just a mess, just a mess. At the same time, our beloved business administrator, who was here for many years, became severely ill and had immediately retired. We had other retirements, other illnesses. It has not been an easy four years, it has not been an easy mayor, or an easy transition for our current mayor as well. This year alone, we had two longtime directors die unexpectedly within four days of each other. These are positions that run the township. These are the jobs that everything we talked about tonight means nothing. What happens at Town Hall is how the town runs and how the town functions. The problem with the current council, and I'm going to give the current council a D, because they don't understand the total operations of how we function within the office of our township council. And with the senior staff members, I'm parting, I know, I'm sorry, I apologize, but folks need to know, there's been turmoil because of circumstances. Not because of any one of us or anyone else, but because sometimes like things happen. Motion Picture Studio, writer strike, writer strike, writer strike, slow the process then. COVID, we came to a standstill. So these are not excuses, these are realities. It has not been easy this last term. I was more than willing to give up my seat and move on. We're stressed right now in this township. Our town employees are extremely stressed. The nonsense that goes on at council meetings is beyond what I've ever seen in any government body that I've worked with. So I hope you give me another opportunity, because we all need to work together and move us now forward.
I realize the town staff, it's a lot. And we also, we wanted, we were going to try to do one more question, but I think that we're, yes, we do want more opportunity to round up. We should first give an individual a two-minute wrap-up, and then we'll close after that. So I apologize. The candidates will be here afterwards to, if you have any questions, feel free to hang out and maybe try to answer questions. And also, if you have a minute afterwards, just to introduce our board of candidates, that we can see them as well. So...
Yeah, I answer first.
Yeah, you answer first. Okay, so why don't we just, the two-minute wrap-up? Let's do the same order that we started.
I know it's very frustrating, a lot of information was spewed this evening. My information's here. Those of you knowing, I'm very committed to our township. From up here, being part of the school system, being part of this community, I'm very proud. Being accused this evening is also extremely disappointing, and I'm not, you know, that's all I'm saying about that. But I started mentioning a few moments ago that we're stressed, we're stressed here. Our government is stressed. And we need to move on and work together. I'm willing to do that again for another four years. I work hard, I am honest, I am transparent. We keep talking about transparency. I don't want to spend money on a forensic audit. I'm agreeing to move forward to do it, just because of all the rhetoric that's out there. There's a lot of rhetoric out there. And it's really, really disappointing, it has really become frustrating and hard to do this job. And, and folks, we got to move forward, we got to work together. The world is stressful enough, as I said earlier, it's about security. Who do you want in your leadership role? You want someone that's going to keep this township safe and secure? You want someone who knows how to lead, you know, someone who knows how to make a decision and not change their mind. The only good is the information you have on the day you made your vote, and you have to stick to that. And sometimes that's a whole different situation. Sometimes the very next day, something pops up unexpectedly that you didn't know the day before, and guess what? You have to stick to that decision, you have to be a true strong leader. I hope I demonstrated those leadership qualities throughout these years. I hope you would support me once again, because I love this town, I grew up in, and I want to move forward, I want to share a lot of these situations out, and, and hopefully retire from this place here. Thank you.
Again, my name is Tammy Williams, and I want to thank Venetia Loon and the Plazico Association for hosting us and giving this opportunity for us to share our vision for the future of West Orange. So as your councilwoman, I've been committed to ensuring West Orange continues to thrive, while addressing the needs of every resident. I've spearheaded the inaugural Health and Wellness Summit, launched our routine events, created my business directory, supported our boards and commissions by bringing critical training for all boards and commissions to improve community engagement when I was your council president. My advocacy for mental health awareness through the West Orange Stop Suicide Advocacy Coalition, veteran awareness roll sack, and the efforts to protect the environment, such as supporting updated tree ordinances, driving green initiatives, are just a few of the ways I've worked to enhance our quality of life. However, advocacy must be balanced with fiscal responsibility. While passion indeed does drive change, it is crucial that we measure our ambitions and ensure that we're investing wisely in our community's future. Whether it's protecting our environment or expanding economic opportunities, we must temper our initiatives with a focus on cost-effective solutions, ensuring that West Orange grows without overburdening our already stressed taxpayers. As your only elected official who visited Israel just a few months ago, my commitment to the residents in West Orange during their time of need is unwavering. I am committed to your needs and to the needs of every resident in this community. So I ask for your continued support as your elected official and your vote on or before November 5th. Thank you.
Electing me gives council independents, Ms. Carba and Ms. Gever Michael endorse me, a majority so we can get, turn the page, Joe, get better, fair redevelopment deal and overall management and governance. When the town's finances are at risk, so are our council finances. This new council team can lead us to a financially stronger, environmentally greener, safer, healthier, and better West Orange. With independence on the council majority, we could have more negotiating leverage so we and the community can make more informed decisions. The majority also would leverage borrowing negotiations as we manage our debt lower. I thank Rabbi Tobin and everybody at Venetia Loon who made this event happen. I thank Maz Ros, Maz, Raz Moskowitz, and all the volunteers, especially the bouncer. Really did a good job. For putting on this important event for our community. I thank everyone who came here today. West Orange is a great place to live, but it faces challenges. I believe I have demonstrated knowledge, independence, track record, and integrity to do this job and to once again serve our community. I am confident and optimistic about our future. If we make progress in fiscal responsibility, our quality of life, protecting our environment, improving personal pedestrian and traffic safety, safeguarding the health of everyone, especially for seniors in the less advantaged, promoting smart economic development, maximizing transparency and accountability, then we can make West Orange an even better place to live. To learn more about me, please go to jokerkobeak.com. Together, we can do better. Thank you.
So I'll again thank the organizers of the event, and everybody who's come out tonight, and Venetia Loon for hosting us. One of the other candidates said that this is a critical election. We have such an opportunity this year in West Orange to really change the way business is done in our town. For decades, I believe, there have been very few sort of simple characters in the governance of our town. And we have, and one of the main disputes of the council over the last year has been overpayment to Jake Esbel, which is our town attorney's law firm, who, you know, takes a lot of the work that our town generates, generates huge billables, and the town is supposed to pay those bills. So, you know, as a lot of people know, there's lawsuit going on between the mayor and the council. And, you know, but it just strikes me that the last year that that lawsuit was happening was such a colossal risk, when there is a mechanism for removing a town attorney who is appointed by a mayor, you need a super majority, and the standard is that the council must have lost confidence in that person's ability to do the job. I've been thinking a lot about Highland's proposal. Highland's proposal, for people who don't know, is there's a forest, it's very near here, just up the hill, where there's a developer proposing to build 500 parking units. And the price for those 500 parking units is the decimation of the forest that sits on top of that hill, and the depletion and ultimate destruction of the weapons that stands on top of that hill. In 2020, our town signed an agreement with the developer, which essentially waived all of our rights to impose fees on that developer. I can't believe we haven't talked about that tonight. To me, it's the most important environmental issue that's happening right now in our town. So I hope you'll go to my website. So I hope you'll go to my website, johnfeyak.com. I have a blog, I've been talking about all those issues a lot, I hope you'll take a look and consider using whatever few votes for me this year.
It starts with integrity. I will not be taking any campaign contributions from developers or anyone seeking a job or a contract in this township. It's just that simple. West Orange is located off of 280. We have country roads, high-country roads to other townships, and access to other towns. We are one of the best educated towns in New Jersey. We don't have to bribe businesses to come to West Orange with tax breaks. For way too long, this town has been entrenched. You know what I mean? And we need to stop that. I'm sort of appalled at the fake outrage when some of our council people are called to account for their own behavior. It would be really nice if you would put that same passion that you are claiming tonight to represent the residents of West Orange. I have spoken a lot about the quality of life. I want to stop the practice of pay-to-play contracts and bring transparency to our budget. These are the skills that I have from being a reporter. I want to end the bad practice of giving tax breaks to wealthy developers, and of course, I want to protect the environment. I totally agree that we have to save West Essex Highlands, we have to save the small forest on Mount Pleasant, the Bridge Road, on Bridge Road, Mount Pleasant Forest, and we need to do whatever we can to protect our residents from flooding. We are on mountains and valleys, and what we do affects every other area. Elect me, and I will make the best decisions for West Orange residents. Thank you so much.
You know, I think the decision that's really here to be made is whether or not the people that you elect are going to be able to come together and to create a dialogue that first off, you can hear and respect. I agree that there needs to be transparency. But I also understand this, that if in order for me to be able to get your vote, I have to demonize other people? In order for me to get your vote, I have to challenge the integrity of other people? Then that's the wrong type of leadership. Because at some point, if we don't believe that the people who are involved in this dynamic are involved because they care about the town, and they care about everybody, then this isn't the town that we all believe that we care about and that we're fighting for. You see, there are people that are connected to me that are going to think more difficultly about the other candidates because of the way that they characterize me, because they know me differently than them. And if I spoke inappropriately about any of them, there are people that are connected to them that are going to think more difficultly about me, which will make my leadership role in town more difficult. And what we've done is we've identified where we have started to pick sides, and we've got the Hackfields and the McCoys against each other, and most of the time, it's on soundbites and rumors. Because when people talk about pilots, my understanding is, and I've checked this, there are pilots in communities all around us and all throughout the state of New Jersey. The issue isn't, should there be a pilot? The issue is, what is the return on our investment? Councilman Krokopiac, when he was Councilman Krokopiac, he actually voted for that agreement along the Highlands. And so now, all of a sudden, isn't a bad thing? He didn't want us to get the golf course, we'd have a thousand units up there. We were getting $500,000 worth of taxes, now we're getting between $500 and $600,000 worth of payments that we don't have to share with the county, and we don't have to share with the school district. The issue is really, are we gonna elect people who are, like he says, independent, but trying to build a majority for one agenda? Are we gonna elect people, we're gonna work with whoever else you elect, to increase the community conversation, to do what's best for everybody in West Orange, not just the ones that we're gonna make decisions for?
Thank you everybody very much for participating today. I think we really should give everybody a round of applause. Also, they will be here for a few minutes afterwards, so feel free, Joe, I know everybody has, there are other questions that they asked, please feel free to go talk to them, and look at that, they ask the questions. Just one quick added before we do leave, we also have a Board of Ed election this year as well, and I think there are two candidates here today, there may be more, if they could stand up. There, Adam Kramer and Jeff Klitzman. Any other Board of Ed candidates? There are, I don't think I have my rootings right. The, so I just want to know, we're running out of time, but I just wanted to make sure you had the two of the candidates. What is the debate for the... Tuesday, 6:30 at the high school. So please, we'll send an email out about it, so you can get access to it, so please come on, Tuesday night, 6:30 to hear these two candidates as well, the other candidates as well. Also, remember also, most important is to go out and vote, that is the most important thing to do. Oh, two side ballots, I'm sorry to remind you, everybody always has to vote with that. An in-person vote. Joe, join, Joe, join that, because you're person voting, yes. And I want to thank also Mike Warren Ross here, who's always amazing to work with and want to make sure our town... Thank you for being here, and again, please, if you have any questions, please feel free to talk to us.